You never know in here.
Yeah, you never, you really never know.
It just never know.
This is so cute.
Of course, these days, I mean, it's been cool outside, but it's been so humid.
That's what I was just saying. So it's so weird because you don't have your air on.
Left the air conditioning on.
Like, but you kind of have to cut the humidity.
Okay, we are online right now. We are dealing with a, with a brief interruption with respect to the room temperature. I think we'll get that fixed momentarily. If staff is otherwise ready to go, then I'll call a meeting order. Okay. Thank you all for being here this evening. For those of you who may be watching us online, you'll see that some of us will be wearing masks and some of us will not. The audience members will be wearing masks the entire time unless they come to this podium to speak for public comments. And if so, feel free to remove your mask and then place it back on after you're finished. For those of us that have to speak a bunch during the meeting, you'll see us without our masks on because that is how our microphones work and they work best that way. Without further ado, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Is there anyone signing for public comments? No one for public comments this evening. Thank you very much, Ms. Short. Sorry?
If you recall, Mr. Mayor, when the pandemic first struck, one of the actions we took was to eliminate signups for public comments. So I think we've just been allowing folks to signal from the crowd that they would like to, to speak and then address themselves.
Well, in that case, I saw Mr. Daniels hand go right up. So Mr. Daniels, please.
Mayor and members of the council, I understand that you all are going to discuss the tree save topic tonight. And I would just like to encourage you all to put something in place that makes sure that the tree save area is actually trees and not scrubby undergrowth. At Tanglewood Forest, the tree save area at the back of the lot is on a very steep pitch and there's no real trees to speak of. And then the other thing is the fact that we, or that the village gives developers credit for 750 feet for planting one quote unquote "large variety" tree on a lot. And that large variety tree, when they plant it, is probably going to cover about 20 square feet. It's probably going to be 40 years before they get 750 square feet, which is 15, 30-foot diameter, basically. So we just encourage the, the council to be a little more realistic in what the expectations are so that we are actually planting trees that will, or that we're, we're giving developers credit for a realistic amount of tree save area based on the trees that they're going to plant. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments this evening? All right. Thank you very much. That brings us to item three of the agenda, the minutes from September 28th. This is a motion to approve those minutes.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you unanimous? Are there any changes to the agenda this evening? I'm not aware of any. If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh, wait, wait, do we have an amendment? Sorry, I was pulling it up and not hearing you say, ask for it. I wanted to add to the agenda, if other folks are okay with it, discussing the creation of a new, a new position at Village Hall.
Okay, you want?
Under manager's report, perhaps?
So number three, under manager's report.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I believe that was unanimous. Mr. Wrights? Yes, okay. That brings us to item number five. I don't have any announcements. If not, then I'll move on to item six. And Ms. Ford is not here, so Ms. Short, will you be standing in?
No.
Oh, yes.
Whoa.
Hold on.
I have arrived.
It's Halloween.
With a presence.
I apologize. It's very good to see you.
Great to see all of you. So, good evening. It's good to see all of your faces. Events, I am happy to report that the 2020 farmers market was a huge success. We just had our last day on Saturday, and even with the rain, we had over 100 customers. So we are planning a holiday pop-up market that's going to be Sunday, November 22nd. It's a Sunday afternoon. We will be outdoors and social distancing at the Y again. And so it'll be a great time to get your Thanksgiving meal preparations, as well as start some holiday shopping. So we're looking forward to that. We'll start promoting that this week. We're also going to have, several of our vendors have signed up and they want to do Saturday deliveries here. So we'll send out an email each week of the vendors that are going to be coming on Saturdays, as well as a link to their website, so you can preorder and have your goodies year-round instead of just during the season. So. Virtual fall cleanup is ongoing right now. We've had several groups to sign up and participate, and that seems to be going rather well. So if you could spread the news, if you know of any groups that are looking to do something to help out the community, I think they can get Crosby Scholars Hours and things like that for doing that. And there's not a lot of projects out there right now for them to do. The Fall Medicine Drop's going to be November 7th. That's going to be at Public Works, and that is 9:00 to noon, and it will be remain in the car, drive-through, so nice, easy service. And the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office is helping out with that again, so big thanks to that. And I just had my first Zoom meeting today about Forsyth Community, so we're going ahead and getting going gusto with that. So if you have ideas for next year's relocation and tourism guide, please, that was when we start those conversations and really get a jump on, and articles and photos, and keep in mind, I'll probably be bugging you all for photos for the new magazine as well. So when you're gathering together with your immediate family, so. And it's almost that time of year for Clemens Wonderland. So I have been working to transfer everything over to our new website. So everything will be on the Village of Clemens website for Clemens Wonderland. We'll still offer all businesses to be able to do any promotions that they're having, any special events that they're having, if they're doing some book signings or something like that, we'll help promote that. And hopefully capitalize, I think Festival of Lights is expecting a really large turnout this year since they can do that and socially distance. So anything we can do to have those people to actually visit our businesses and become loyal customers to them would be great. So we'll be doing those two things that we've done in the past, as well as this year, a new initiative for Light Up the Village. And I apologize, you guys got a big gibberish document today, I think on your staff report. That was like my train of thoughts that you will never be able to follow when I start to pull something together. But I just sent the actual document to Scott, and I have print, printed copies here. But it's going to be for local businesses and organizations within our municipality, and it'll be our first annual holiday decorating contest for them to do a storefront, a door, whatever they would like. People will vote on Facebook, as well as people have the opportunity to vote on our website. And the winner, winner will get, just wait for it, a really prized trophy that everyone's going to want year after year after year. So it's, and bragging rights. So that's a big deal. If you win, like, light up the village business and the Tanglewood Festival Lights area. So that's kind of a big deal, or what we're hoping to. Pretty much all of our in-person events have been canceled for the year. I've been on several meetings with Visit NC and the North Carolina Festival Association. And as of right now, it's just, it, it seems that nothing's really going through the proper channels and getting a solid confirmation that, that everything is safe. So I think, you know, to keep everything safe, all of the in-person, we won't do, but we're going to be at least a little creative. So we're still planning on having our tree lighting, and it will be like a Facebook Live event. And we've got some fun things planned with our sponsor Chick-fil-A to go along with that. So we'll be releasing details, but we'll, we'll still be able to be in the spirit, even online. So that's it for events.
Excellent.
Shannon is going to be working with the Friends of the Library.
Yes.
As we start the program for the pavers, the brick pavers for the new library. There is a plan in place that Kernersville used, and they're sharing that with us. And Shannon's going to help us get the word out. And if anybody else in the room, or the audience, or in TV land wants to help us, we'll have more information later about how much the pavers are and what can be included and all that kind of thing. But this, this means, folks, that this library is actually moving right along. As you can see, it's bricked, the brick is on now, and it's, it's, it's getting there. It'll be exciting.
Yes. We hope to pave the entire area. We get such a response for people wanting pavers. We're excited.
On Festival of Lights, I know last year, we had a meeting to kind of go over some of the details of that with the county. Is there anything like that this year?
Yes, there have been ongoing meetings that I have been invited to, but I am no expert when it comes to traffic. I think the majority have been that. I have been touched, in touch with Sergeant Geiger, who's been in on all of those meetings, to kind of fill me in if there's ever a place that I need to be plugged in. But right now, I think they're going into the nitty-gritty of details with the construction on 40 and what that's going to look like and how those things are going to work. So he may have more input on that.
Well, what about the new road in the park? Is that going to be done so that they could do the new route?
Sergeant Geiger has told me that is done, so I'm sure he would love to report that.
According to maintenance over at Tanglewood, it is pretty much about finished. They got some paving yet to do because part of it will be paved, part of it will be gravel. It's going to be, if you've been thinking about where the steeplechase is, it used to be turned, two lanes, that's about four lanes wide now. So it's going to be two lanes going in, two lanes coming out, and it's going to circle the whole steeplechase area. So it's doubled, it's double-laned and almost twice as big as what it was in years past.
I know that was, that was part of the goal of that, was to get the traffic off the road even more, and on a year when it's going to be even more traffic than normal, at least that's what we anticipate.
But as of now, according to them, the Red Barn and all is going to be closed this year because of the COVID. So they'll be just driving in, going through, and then driving out. There won't be any stops along the route, other than restrooms, that kind of thing.
You guys heard anything about any type of online advanced ticket purchasing?
Not right this minute. I think we got a meeting coming up again next week. I can ask about it.
That'd be great, because that'll be, that's really the big stopper when it comes to the traffic not moving forward. And then obviously your hindrance with, you know, to dump the, the ramps.
But, yeah, I'll ask about that, because they started doing debit cards, and that seems to hold it up a little bit versus everybody just paying cash.
Thank you very much.
And on that same note, we will have the placards available for those people who may not have them in the communities that live near the area. And we'll be doing an email blast soon about those and probably leaving them on the bench outside each day for people to take, so they don't have to come in the office.
Middlebrook, Asbury Place, and isn't there a third one? Tanglebrook Farms and?
West Ridge.
All right. Anything further?
Not on events.
Well, listen, we're all very glad to see you, but no one is more glad than Ms. Short, who didn't have to go through that this evening.
So next up is the policy concerning donation of sponsorship. I know we get quite frequent requests for sponsorship monies, and sometimes I feel a little guilty just kind of like springing that on you. And we don't always have enough information, I think, for you to make valuable decisions. We don't exactly have that huge pot of money somewhere that we can use, unfortunately, to do a lot. So what I did is I researched and reached out to a lot of local municipalities, as well as actually went to other states as well to kind of see how they handled sponsorship requests. The overall component, I think, of sponsorships from government entities is most people just don't have monetary sponsorships that they give out. It's mostly in-kind sponsorships. And those people who are asking for either to make it an even playing field, they usually have some type of application process that they use. So that's kind of what the policy here that you have in front of you, and if you've had a chance to look at it, just a few things that I want to point out quickly. So I think under A intent, the last paragraph is extremely important, that we don't give the wrong idea by adopting a policy, which in turn says that we discourage monetary donations as good stewards of taxpayer money, and kind of encourage in-kind donation sponsorship requests if they're looking for help from the, the agency. And then a couple other things that it can only be, nonprofit groups can be the only ones that request for, for the, for sponsorship. And had a couple of things, it's at your desk, you have a new printout of this, for us to always remember that any applicant that is requesting funding from the village, that they would be acting as an agent on our behalf. So whatever they're requesting money from should be something that we, as a government, can do and would want to do. So I think those are two good things to keep in mind. And then the application process is on the back page. So that would be required materials from everyone who requests money and donations. And I tried to get this as comprehensive as I could to help to make decisions much easier, instead of going back and forth and asking for more information, so we had the full picture when those requests come before us. So I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
When you said nonprofit, is 501(c)(3) only, or?
I mean, that would be up for you to decide, but I do think that's what I had placed in this.
Under F exceptions, she specifically mentions 501(c)(3).
And of course, you do have that kind of loophole on F for exceptions, if you so choose.
You're talking about, or entities with taxing authority?
Correct.
Okay. Also, how about the number of applicants, applications of organization can file annually?
There is nothing in that for this, and that would be something to consider if you're interested in, if you want to limit how many times an entity can apply.
And how many times, you know, and the number of times it can be awarded annually?
Correct.
So that we spread the wealth, so to speak.
Right.
And also, where the event would take place, could we put something there where it would have to take place within the corporate limits of the Village of Clemens or Tanglewood? Sensitive money is this community's money.
Absolutely. That's, those are all valid.
Other comments or questions?
I, I have a question. This is Elliot. For whoever in staff might know the answer to this. So the draft we have in front of us has some edits about the applicant will be acting as an agent. And I, I think I know what that's aiming at, but I haven't really talked with staff about this addition. Basically, in order to make sure you're giving out public money correctly and within the law, what you're giving it for has to, A, fall within the things a government can do, and B, has to have primarily a public benefit, not a benefit just to one private entity or person. And I, I think maybe this agent thing is basically saying, you are our agent to go accomplish something that a government could do on our behalf. At the same time, it, I mean, it sounds a little weird to me, like, you know, some nonprofit gets into a car accident or something, and they're our agent, or, you know, do we have to monitor what they're doing to make sure that they're acting appropriately as our agent? My presumption is probably this language came from some template or, or recommendation.
School of Government.
Yeah. I mean, if that's, if that's where it came from, my, my guess is that it's there for a reason and is probably a good idea. But it, it just, it seems a little curious when you first read that.
Are you saying that you would prefer some other wording, such as they would be representing the village, or what it?
Why do they have to be representing us or being an agent?
Well, that's what?
Yeah. Is that what you're getting at, is why do they need to be an agent or representative of the village just by receiving funds?
Yes, I, I think what that's driving at is basically this notion that we're giving you money for you to do something that would be allowable for us to do directly. But, but you're going to go carry it out on our behalf. And I think the significance there is that, you know, there are some things that a government just isn't made to do, and those type of things that you're supposed to avoid. But, yeah, I guess my, my just concern was when you call somebody your agent, are you sort of on the hook for everything that they go and do as, as your agent? I, I will bet you that if you got this from the School of Government and they said, yeah, I would include this language, that it's a good idea. But just wanted to hear a little bit more about how we got that particular phrase in there.
Are you saying take it out altogether or use a different word?
I, I am not saying take it out altogether. I, I mean, if, if, if School of Government thinks that's the magic word to use, it, it may very well be important to use that word. It, it just, I, I had not seen kind of where did we get that language from. And it sounds a little curious, but, but it, but it may be exactly the right thing to say. I, I, go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, it just seems to me that if this hasn't been through your office yet, then it probably needs to go through there. To me, it would make sense that, you know, if this language does need to be in there, then there probably needs to also be some sort of waiver indemnity language for the applicant to just say, listen, just because you, you're acting on our behalf, doesn't mean that, you know, you, that suddenly we're on the hook for any dumb things you do also. So to me, it sounds like we got some things to iron out. It's the first time on, anyway. So I, I think if maybe that, if council is in agreement, maybe that'd be the best direction for it.
That would be my recommendation. I, I had looked at this, everything other than the red edit that we see on the most recent version. And since this is just a information item, particularly, if, if you wanted to wait until next time to actually pass it, I could inquire more specifically about where that language comes from and if it's really the right thing we want to say.
All right. All right. Let's, let's go ahead and put that on as agenda item for?
Yes, that was the intention this evening all along, to put this in front of you guys to get any comments or suggestions. I, I will add that my belief from that wording is that the group that would receive funding would be subject to all the rules, regulations, policies that the village would have on itself. For example, the Title VI Civil Rights Nondiscrimination Policy that we approved two weeks ago, that would apply to whomever would receive this funding also. That's my belief, but we're certainly willing to investigate that further. And Councilmember Rogers, were the, the comments that you made, suggestions for potential amendments to the policy as well?
Yes. And would it be a whole, hold harmless if we provided assistance or monetary that, that would keep the village from being liable for the actions of the organizations?
I think that would probably be included in the agreement. So on number five, under procedure. So if you're awarded a donation or a sponsorship, they must enter an agreement with the village, and then the agreement would include all of that. It's my understanding.
Okay. Well, just to be specific, thank you.
Most likely, we would require a certificate of insurance with the village being named as an additional insured.
That's correct. That's on the application process.
I'm assuming there's an application process. They get approved or denied.
Correct.
Once they get approved, then it goes into the actual legal contract piece.
Correct.
Approved and then passed accountable.
That's correct.
So this would take about, be, you have to apply 120 days in advance prior to?
That is correct, with all of your documentation.
Very good.
All right. Well, I think that's it for this unit of items. All right, all right, good. Thank you, Ms. Ford. That brings us to item 6B.
I'll do a brief introduction. However, if you have any specific questions, I would tend to refer those to Mr. Gannell. We have, as we discussed at this past meeting, had a discussion with, with the folks with Waste Management, and I am on the right one, about doing the bulk pickup instead of doing it with our own staff. As you saw from the, or heard from the discussion last time, the amount that they quoted for them to do it with their own forces was only slightly above what they were charging us just to dispose of what we collect. So for what our total cost was, including staff time, et cetera, we can almost provide two pickups a year for what we're paying now to do one. So from the discussion last time, we did ask them to look at doing two instead of one. And from my understanding, again, I will refer any specifics to, to Mike, but they really can't be related to a storm event like we had recently, just because they don't have the resources to allocate that quickly. And the type of debris that's generally generated from those sort of things is not the type that they can take to a landfill. So we can schedule, I believe, Mike, that those pickups to be pretty much whenever we would like for them to be, but they do request 60 days prior notice.
So that's the reason for the 60 days, is to give them time to mobilize?
Correct, correct. Mike, anything to add?
No, you covered it pretty. No, you covered it pretty well. I mean, he added, there's a small paragraph in there in the contract that, that he, I'm talking to Mr. Holbrook, that he added for the 60 days prior notice. And we did talk about extensively about if we had a disaster. And they were more than willing to provide means to collect that. It just, it would be a totally different situation. So.
What's the term, term of this agreement? I'm sorry, I don't have in front of me right now.
As far as?
Is the term the same as our contract with Waste Management right now?
It is.
Same term?
Same terms.
So we're not adding years to the current Waste Management contract?
No, sir.
Correct. That's just an amendment to the existing and does not change the current term at all.
Okay.
And the contract reads, it's, I think, the amount for one pickup is, we can add an additional one if we want, just have to give them 60 days' notice. That's the only thing he added to, is one, one paragraph in that contract.
Any other questions about this?
And this, this budget amendment is to, is, gives us enough to do two bulk item pickups. Correct. Okay.
Are we going to set the dates for these now, or?
That's, you don't have to now. I would, I would think about, the second pickup, we need to think about. The first pickup in March seems to work well. I think if you are interested in having a second pickup, I think staff and council needs to discuss when that may be.
Staff expressed any concern about not having first dibs on some of the bulky items?
That has been a comment. That has been a comment.
I see a lot of no's.
Not us, not Stephen. No, we don't. We're glad to see it.
All right, all right. I just wanted to make sure, like, if that, if that was like your Christmas, I didn't want to, like, take it away, Christmas in March, you know? Listen, I'm, in our neighborhood, I've, I got crutches one time, like, nice ones.
Most, most of the stuff, the good stuff's already gone before we ever get to it.
I got a table one time. All kinds of cool stuff.
I've got all sorts of cool stuff. I got a full Barbie playhouse one time. And I get, I waited like two hours to let my kids play with it.
Wait a minute, you got a Barbie playhouse for yourself?
Yeah, yeah, I had to play with it first.
Oh, I see. Okay, just checking.
No, I'm serious about the playhouse stuff. Anyway, all right, sorry, enough about that. Thank you, thank you very much. It's on for an action item this evening. If you guys have had a chance to remove it, review it, then you can take action on it if you wish.
Do we need to make two motions on this? Thank you. Make a motion to approve the force amendment to the contract between the Village of Clemens, North Carolina and Waste Management of Carolinas.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. That brings us up to.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, go ahead, sorry, yes, the second part there.
I'd like to make a motion to approve budget amendment 21G2.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. Now on to item 6C, swab ordinance amendment options. And the tree save requirement discussion.
I, I will defer the, most of the discussion to Mr. Kimbrel and Mr. Gannell. We, staff did meet again this morning to, to go through everything, make sure we were all on the same page. As you may recall from last time, there's been some discussion about altering the roles and responsibility of the Stormwater Advisory Board. And Councilmember Barson, of course, is the council liaison. She's drafted some thoughts on what an amended role and responsibility would be, but I also believe there's been quite a bit of discussion about basically sunsetting that group at this point, as I believe several other communities have done as their stormwater programs have matured over the years. So i- if it pleases council, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Kimbrel to discuss further.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to be back. Sorry I missed the last meeting. I hate that I had to miss it, but I'm back and in better health now to talk about this. Jumping right in, and I did watch the last meeting and I, I saw that in the previous council meeting that staff had gave, or council gave staff direction to explore two options, one being dissolving and one being evolving of the current board that we have here. And I believe Mr. Fuss brought up some important issues that are important items for you all to understand and to make you more aware of the current situation on that. It's the responsibilities of the current Stormwater Advisory Board. So I'm gonna try and skim through these pretty quick. What we have throughout our ordinances, as well as on our webpage for the current responsibilities for Stormwater Advisory Board are: Review and provide recommendations on the stormwater management plan; review the Phase II annual stormwater report; provide recommendations regarding the identification, implementation of our new stormwater management program activities; review and provide recommendations on the post-construction ordinance; review and provide recommendations on the list of discharge detection and elimination program and ordinance; provide guidance for long-range capital improvement planning, as well as perform other duties as directed or approved by our governing body. So with all that said, an important thing for all of you to note is that all of these responsibilities ultimately fall back at your feet. It's, the final decision's made here in this room by, by you all as council. Staff feels at this time, and again, I apologize, I'm reading this off, it's, I feel I do it more justice to read this, I hate to read this like this, but staff feels at this time, based upon the maturity and the establishment of our current program, that the Stormwater Advisory Board has fulfilled all duties required to help establish and implement an EPA-compliant program. Currently, the Village of Clemens is one of two local municipalities of approximately 50 that have been deemed as an NCDEQ and EPA-compliant program. At this point, the most efficient manner of reviewing, altering, or discussing the current stormwater program and its components would be through council. In discussions with Kernersville, their Stormwater Advisory Board was only in place for a duration of one to two years, and then they reverted all responsibilities back to the Board Alderman. As for timing, I know that we had discussed the timing of the UDO as well as other ordinance changes. We, we held a staff meeting earlier today to talk about this. The public hearing is set for November, with the potential to have all items addressed before the first of the year. So it would allow, if the council elects to dissolve the board, complete dissolve and fine December 31st, enrolling all responsibility back into the council realm by then. For future stormwater discussions, we could simply add a stormwater report to the council agenda for when pressing items present themselves or at a timely milestone. This would help to better include council and other staff with current stormwater situations and develop a faster, more efficient response mechanism. So is this an option that council is willing to entertain?
Yes, for me.
Yep, that's, it's all council members.
So?
Five nodding heads.
Would we, or?
Want a motion or do you want to?
If all are in favor, a motion would be good to proceed on and finalize this.
Well, I, well, hold, hold, I mean, okay, so I, I apologize. I just want to make sure, as far as staff goes, is that what you guys need right now or is this?
I think you're proposing a, a motion to move forward with the process to appropriately modify our ordinances as opposed to a motion to modify our ordinances right this moment.
Right, yes, that's correct. So to continue on with the process, that, go ahead and finalize everything out.
All right, sorry, Ms. Barson, I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that.
I make a motion that we continue moving forward with absolving the stormwater board and any other activities therein.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous.
Thank you much.
Fire away.
Trees.
Tree save.
I'm sorry, no, never mind, no trees.
I, I believe Nosher has a, a report prepared.
Well, I kind of go.
They, they do. Nosher, if you don't mind, come forward and discuss that portion.
Sorry, manager always knows best.
I'll hold tight.
I think it would've been pretty fun watching Mr. Kimbrel speak on something he was not prepared to speak about.
I'll send him down.
Okay. Did you guys got the memo? Okay, so in that memo, I explored the concept of essentially what's in effect now. I think the interesting thing to consider is, are we considering tree save in and of itself? Are we considering tree save along with stormwater as another tool for stormwater? For, for the latter, I can't really speak to that. I will let our stormwater engineer speak to it. In regards to tree save in and of itself, I did review that there are three policies on that. We actually already have a tree save in effect. The process for modifying that, I would say should probably take a while. I didn't, it's not necessarily going to be something immediately overnight. It might require, I would say, outreach to a number of, of stakeholders, including the development community. The other option was for infill, and I think that essentially goes along with any modifications to the tree and landscape ordinance. And then there is the discussion of conservation subdivision ordinances. And we actually have something very close to that right now, our planned residential development. That could be tweaked a little bit more, and that might be a easier thing to address in terms of time and resources. But if we will modify the tree and landscape preservation ordinance, I would recommend giving it some more time and more resources. I think it would be best to take more of a comprehensive approach to it. But that's where we are on that. If, if we are concerned about tree species and, and things of that, that's probably the route I would recommend. But we can always make tweaks to our conservation subdivision, but I would also inform you guys that developers always can choose and they don't necessarily always choose to go the planned residential development route. They will choose to go usually the conventional subdivision route. So that's just something to let people be aware of, they have options and they, and they choose to go with the method they're most familiar with. But you guys want to talk specifics about tree save?
Well, and I asked that this be put on the agenda because it seems to me just logical. If we're looking into stormwater regulations and possibly changing some and changing UDO, this goes hand in glove with stormwater, is, is tree saves, more trees, better retention, all of that kind of thing. So, and this is why I thought now is the time to do it. But if, if you're saying that you're going to want more time to look into it, is that, is that something that we need to spend more time doing or do we need to say both and do them both at the same time if they're going to be changes to the UDO? Or what's the best way to?
So I would, I would say it kind of depends on the scope. If, if it's looking to assist stormwater, maybe making some tweaks to the planned residential development might be the route to go. But I think if, if, again, in and of itself, I would like to spend some time on it because I think you're going to need to get some, some stakeholders involved. I would personally like to see, I spent one winter and fall in Virginia doing nothing but landscape enforcement. And I will say, we had an arborist on staff in Winchester, and it got a lot more done. I got that expertise, I could interact with that individual. And we did some tweaks to the ordinance to make it a bit more acceptable for, for caliper sizes. I would prefer to go that route because tree species are always an ever-evolving thing too. And, you know, this ordinance might have been, it looks like 2011 was the last time it was amended. Maybe the tree species list was appropriate then, but I could tell you it's probably not appropriate now. And those things will take some time. And I would certainly like to speak with people that are certified and, you know, also inform, you know, the citizens about it and see what the development community also thinks because, again, this is always, you know, there's a, there's a balance with ordinances and, and development. And if you lean too much on either side, it, it can be problematic for both. And I would imagine a priority is also to keep housing affordable. So the more things we add on, which is easy to do, it might lead to the cost being placed on the person who's purchasing the home or the commercial property, developing commercial property.
But it can also be said that doing things upfront will save money in the long run too.
If the goal is to affect stormwater?
Yeah.
I will certainly defer to the stormwater engineer for the trees and their data on stormwater, on how effective it is, because I, I tried reading a few articles on it and I'm certainly not an engineer, so I'll definitely defer to the stormwater engineer on that.
All right, let's talk trees and stormwater. All right. The amount of area that's going to be required to get any kind of mitigative credits out of stormwater runoff with tree save, you're, you're not going to have it on most of the development sites that we have left here in Clemens. It takes a large area to offset any kind of credit in, in flood mitigation. You're looking at total sites. Let's use Kleiner Forest for an example. To get any kind of mitigative numbers off of that, you would have to at least use half the sites as, as a wooded forested area based off the calculations that are provided. So it's not really a practical approach to, to use tree save area and looking at that program to assist with a stormwater flood mitigation type structure. Another interesting thing to keep in mind with trees and stormwater, when you look at wooded areas, one of the biggest problems you have in those areas is severe erosion and gulling. And what it is, is that most of these, these harder structures, their root wads come up to the top of the surface and expand out, and you'll see mounds. And eventually what will happen is the channelization of water down a hill slope or through a forested area, which ends up turning into a gully, which is more of an impairment to stormwater runoff than anything. So they, they do serve a purpose over a short period of time, but as they become a mature forest, it, it's, it's a catch 22. You have your pros and you have your cons. And really, stormwater and trees, it, it, it helps some, but then again, it hurts you too in the long run. So my suggestion is, in regards to trying to utilize any kind of tree save area and in assisting with stormwater, I don't think we're going to really help ourselves a whole lot with that.
So you're saying separate the two?
I agree.
Yes.
Working together. All I'm saying is, we've had that tree ordinance for a while now. And it, it may be that it needs to be updated, maybe that there isn't anything we can do about it. And I know that as much as we ask developers to try and save trees, trees die while there's construction. That's just the way it is. So if everything we've got is working just fine now, leave it alone. But if there's something else we can do, then let's look at it.
All right.
Well, if, that's all, yeah. You're all, I, I would just say, yeah, I think, you know, some tweaking on the species is certainly something I would personally like to see. I think that might be for another time, once I get a, be able to grab an arborist and, and spend some time and maybe try to do some public outreach as well, so.
All right, thank you very much. This is on the agenda as a tree save discussion. So I don't know if there's any other questions that council members may have for staff as far as this discussion goes.
Them working together and telling us what we can do, what we can't do, what we should be doing, what we shouldn't be doing. Are we doing everything right? Can we add any, whatever? Just seems that now's the time to do it.
Okay. Any questions from staff on that then? All right. If there's nothing further on that, that brings us to item 6D, Mr. Buffkin.
The first item I have, you see on the agenda there, the Lassiter Road CIP clarification. I believe after our meeting last, last time, we did get some additional information. And I'll let Mr. Gannell share that with you, please.
Mayor, council, what I wanted to clarify is, the last time we referred to, we were having it evaluated by a third party. That is true. We had, did receive, we have had Lassiter Road solely by itself evaluated. But while, after that was, while that was being evaluated, we had two other projects come in, Innisfield Lane or Drive and Innisfield Court, which are above it. So what we have asked our engineering firm to do is to evaluate that. Evaluate as a whole system. So I, I just want to make that clarification that it is being evaluated as a whole entity and see what impacts if we do any kind of modification to Innisfield, the, the two projects above it, what would the impacts it would be for Lassiter Road. I did talk to the engineer today and we will have it by the next meeting. So that's the only clarification I want to make, that.
All right, thank you very much.
The second item you see there is the Tanglebrook 2 CIP removal request. The, as you see, the email that was included in your agenda packet, the property owner that is primarily affected by the, the flooding issues there has requested that, that project be removed. We can get into specifics, but I, I think the email that you have in the, the packet pretty much speaks for itself. Mike, Wes, anything to add to, to that?
So you all have the packet in front of, or the email, so you, you've seen the request. It's an interesting request, it's a good request, I like seeing what I'm, what I'm getting. Tanglebrook 2 is at the bottom of the list right now. It's a, it's a low priority, low ranking project that's out there. The property owner that has sent this email address is the same one that was there whenever the project went on to the list. Our belief is, is that this project made it on the list because of a structural flooding situation, there, there were some grading issues on the downstream end of the pipe. We went back after this request was provided, we checked on two things, we checked on the hydraulic analysis of the pipe system as well as the structural integrity. We followed up with everything this past week and after having the line, we had a camera ran through the line to make sure it was okay. We found one issue just outside of the roadway that we can repair. And we have spoke with the property owner and based off what we found, everything meets our satisfaction. So we're going to go ahead and repair that one small piece of pipe that's on the end of it. We'll handle this as a minor CIP line item, remove this from the list if council would like for us to, and then that'll be one less project on the list for you.
Property owner at, at length a couple of times within the past few weeks. And of course, you know, the ex- you know the exact details of our conversation now, I can't recall precisely, but it made a ton of sense, and the advice that I gave her was to contact Wes regarding its removal. She is the only one downstream from where the potential issue at some point had occurred, and her family's figured out how to mitigate what water they receive, and don't believe that anything we do is going to change that, and, which is really accurate based on what Wes said, and oddly enough before, because she was just not understanding how the water flow happened before, it kind of pinged this on to the CIP list, but now is chronic, because then she was like, well, oh, I didn't mean to have created, you know, a bigger thing out of it than necessary. So, she would be very happy to, she and her husband, again, being the ones affected by this, would be thrilled to see it just removed.
Question, what are the other two Tanglebrook? One's Plain Tanglebrook and the other's Tanglebrook.
The Plain Tanglebrook is a Tanglebrook crossing right below?
Rockmore.
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 Right below Rockmore. Tanglebrook III is at the first cul-de-sac on the right, as you come in off of Idles Road. I can't remember the name, if I had a map, it's, it's what?
Maidwood.
Maidwood, that's Tanglebrook III, which is the second from last on the list currently. And as you recall from a previous meeting, Tanglebrook, the Plain Tanglebrook, we had a budget amendment on two council meetings, possibly three council meetings ago about that. It's currently under design.
And question for Mr. Gannell is, we paved down to Maidstone, Tanglebrook Trail, and stopped, and that was in anticipation of doing a further stormwater project down?
Correct.
That's correct. I left a void there. Well, I didn't pave that area with anticipation that we're going to have to remove the asphalt and have a work zone to either replace pipes or add an additional pipe to prevent overtopping the road. So, we'll pick that up probably in the spring.
Okay.
As anticipation, so.
Thank you.
I went past each driveway so we can close it off, residents on each end of it have fresh pavement to come out on, we'll keep everything nice and neat.
Okay, thank you. I can answer a few questions.
Wes, just kind of quickly, in the spirit of the removal request, something that she and I had spoken about too was really that more of an opportunity to mitigate the water flow under her property would benefit from a cost-sharing program. Do you know where that's at at this point?
So, right, right now, that's, it's being reviewed by staff, and I believe Mr. Fuss has looked, has seen, Mr. Fuss, have you seen that draft yet? The 50-50 cost-share program? Okay, so, it's in review right now, but yes, you're right, she would be a proponent to receive benefit from a program such as that. So, and just to clear things up, I think, I think we're going to need a motion to remove it from the list if you all are in favor for that, and I don't know why we wouldn't be, but I believe that I can, I've actually already talked to a contractor and got a contractor all ready, ready to go. He could start as soon as we talk tonight and get going to get this handled on a minor level.
Well, if there's no further questions or discussion, is there a motion as far as removing Tanglebrook, Tanglebrook II from the CIP list?
I make a motion that we remove Tanglebrook II from the CIP list.
All in favor?
Thank you all.
And new third item, unless there are other questions on that? New third item is the position discussion. As you all may be aware, Ms. Fife, who's been with us for many years, has given notice that she intends to retire later this year, and we've discussed a number of times at the staff level, and I've spoken with a council member who I believe has discussed with perhaps many or all of you about the possibility of evolving that position into something different. I think there's still some discussion on what would be the most beneficial. We've talked about a planning technician, someone who can help with the day-to-day activities. Of course, part of Ms. Fife's duties currently is to attend planning board meetings, to prepare the minutes, to, you know, help put together the agenda packets, et cetera, and that's certainly something, say, a planner tech could perform. The only, I guess, concern I have is if we're going to continue to expect that the phone system, you know, I guess that's been historically something we have done, that the phone rings, a person answers and gets the information you need or to the, to the person you need to speak with, I have concern that a person who's going to be looked at and asked to do some more technical tasks is going to be able to do that very well if the phone's ringing every 15 seconds. So, I just wanted to make sure that, first of all, it's something that you guys are interested in us looking at doing something perhaps in lieu of, of what that position currently is, and if so, there may be some other things that have to go along with it, i.e. a automated phone answering system and that sort of thing. So, I'd just sort of throw that out there for you guys to hear your thoughts before we get too far down that rabbit hole.
My thought would be personally to do some sort of automated phone answering, you know, process, you know, choose one for, you know, whomever, and two, et cetera. I know that some folks come into Village Hall every so often, but I don't think it's so many that it can't be managed in terms of, you know, who would be out front. I don't know if that totally makes sense for the technician, I would, if that's the role we went with. I mean, I agree that, I don't know if that's, they probably need more space to do their stuff, but yeah, in terms of broadly speaking, I mean, I think another professional role is really needed and warranted, and it's been something that this council and the previous council discussed. Somebody may be with some project management skills and some, some planning, planners' knowledge, and that's, that's where, I mean, they're just throwing it out there.
Well, there's, I see no reason why we shouldn't at least try. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
I would add that we would most likely have to adjust the pay grade for the person that we would be bringing in, but since we're likely looking for someone with an advanced degree, could be a person shortly out of school, but still, otherwise, we're probably going to turn into a stepping stone to a larger position, and it may still turn into that, but that's not necessarily a bad thing. So, again, just looking for you guys, okay, to continue discussing and present something as far as the location. Ms. Ford has not been coming into the office regularly, and for the foreseeable future is probably going to be working from home. I think it makes a lot of sense to put this person in that office adjacent to where the planner and community development director's office is so that they can work closely. So, that sort of brings into question what exactly we're going to do with that space at the front door, but that's something we can figure out down the road. Do I just seek consensus to continue the discussion and present something to you perhaps at next meeting or the one following, what we can?
I'd like to add a couple of things to this. Well, one is I'd like to see our planner, Nosher, and Jeff Bone, the part-time person involved, directly involved in creating this position, because Mr. Bone will not be with us forever, he's retired once, and once he retires, then we will lose that piece we had before, and this person, and he can be introduced to the movers and shakers in Forsyth County, so he'll know the people and who to contact, and we won't be starting from ground zero, which I think that would, that would be a very big benefit to us.
Absolutely.
That's my comment as far as who would help form and have direct input into that person, so we get the technical, the expertise that we're looking for at the best price we can get it.
I have a lot of unnecessary comments about robots and computers and other things that I'm going to keep to myself. Okay. Anything else on that particular topic?
I feel you got clear direction.
I think so, I just, I need to know that there's consensus to continue moving forward with exploring and present something as soon as we practically can.
Okay, and in the interim, we will not be hiring anyone, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Do we know, do we know Ms. Patty's retirement date exactly?
I believe it is November 30, is that correct?
Okay, all right. Sounds good.
That's all I have for you at this time, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item 6E, Mr. Fuss.
Legal-wise, things have been fairly low intensity since our last meeting, been following up with staff on some of the stormwater issues you've been talking about, but nothing too major to report right now.
Thank you. Item 6F, Mr. Rahimzada.
Just an update on what Wes was talking about. As I mentioned last meeting, we're moving forward with taking out some of the responsibilities that are quasi-judicial and placing it back in Board of Adjustment. That should go ahead and get in front of Planning Board next week. Of course, because we still meet with Planning Board digitally, we'll probably do another recess and then pick up on it. I'll just ask them what the appropriate time is. Usually, it's the Thursday following up, and then you guys should probably see it November to initiate the public hearing, and then hopefully it'll come back to Board of Adjustment the second meeting of November.
All right. That brings us to item 6G. Is there, well, actually, first of all, now that I'm looking at this, do we need to add grounds, do we need to add any grounds for the closed session or is this it?
I believe that is it, Mayor. There is, we do want to discuss multiple properties, but I think one motion could cover that.
Okay.
Elliot, you agree. I don't know of anything other than real property acquisition that is meant to be discussed in the closed session.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure on that before the motion was made, so is there a motion to go into closed session?
I make a motion that we go to closed session, discuss property acquisition in accordance with NCGS 143-318.11A5.
Second.
Who won there? I don't know. I'll let this show is ready. Okay, we are back in open session from closed session without any action taken. Are there any council comments this evening? If there are none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.
All right. Let's land on the discussion about.